Twenty-one, City Commission meeting for the city of Mangum. And at this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Billy, would you please do the roll call?
Gay. Webb.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum. And the following items that are on the, that are routine, that are on our consent agenda are to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of December first of 2020, and the 2020 December claims, and the January 2021 estimated payroll. Is there anything, any item you'd like to have removed from the consent agenda to discuss? If not, do I have a motion?
I'd make a motion to the agenda.
We have a motion from Ronnie Webb, and a second from Ron Gay. So at this time, we'll call for a vote, please.
Gay.
Yes.
Webb. Webb.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Reports, number four, financial report by the city manager. Okay, Dave, you are muted. Dave, you're muted.
You're muted, Dave.
Yeah, I'm trying to get to it, sorry. Okay, the, the sales tax for November is sitting at forty-three thousand. Of course, that's nowhere near where we were last month, but it's expected. That's right in the average of where it needs to be, so we're doing all right. Of course, if you look at the last month and last year, it is down a bit. It's down eleven percent from last year and twenty percent off of, off of last month. With, with it being fifty-something thousand last month, I don't see that being a big surprise to anybody. The use tax is up from last year. It's a little bit down from last month, but that's okay, because it's still in that ballpark. And, and we haven't seen a major drop in either one of those, so. The, you're gonna see the fund balances in the negative on this one. That's because of our expenditures have gone up a little bit. There's, they're a little up from last month, but when you compare that to last year, they're down, way down, over twenty-seven percent down from last year. So we're still in good shape, though, for the general government. The general fund is still seventy-two thousand up. The Mangum Utility Authority for the year so far is up one fifty-seven, nine hundred. So we're still in the green and operating as, as effectively as we can, given the circumstances. So here's your sales tax figures, the bar graph for the year. As I said, we're giving you that, that forty-three thousand there, and that is right on cue with, with our average. So we're, we're in good shape. We're still doing okay there. And then, of course, our use tax, over the past few months, you see, that's a, that's a pretty steady line there. And we like to see that. Steady is good. Steady, slow and steady wins the race, we, we like to say. So that is my financial report. I've got some other business that I'm gonna bring up. And one of those is we have our new website. It is live, went live on the first of January. If you haven't gone to see that, I highly encourage you go and see it. It's, uh, it's fantastic. We, we spent about four months of getting it all put together. Sorry, let me switch my screen back over. So yeah, it's, it's very user-friendly. It's ADA compliant. The, the one thing that we were really hoping we could do was to launch our online bill pay with it. The vendor is running late. We're, we're not too happy with that, because we were really looking forward to being able to do a live, go live on both of those, with the website and the, the bill pay. But yeah, it is what it is. And we're waiting for the vendor right now to send us the, the login and credentialing. So once they get that, we'll load that into the website.
I said everything would be up the end of next week.
So there you go. But again, the website hasn't changed. The, it's still www.cityinmangum.com. And we, we now own the domain. Had to go through all of that. We've, we've bought the domain from, from the previous website managers. And so yeah, we've got that running, and that's fantastic. The airport fuel terminal is working, finally. We, we actually had one of our, one of our pilots called and said, hey, I was able to get gas in it, so it's working. We're still waiting on, on the company to give us our login credentials to be able to go into the system to change our pricing.
I've already done it.
Oh, you got it?
It's set up right.
Perfect. So that was one thing I was waiting on, and so I'm happy with that. I'm trying to think of anything else. The vaccines, I'll give you a little update on that. We get a, I get a daily update on where we're sitting with our vaccines. I, I say daily, I get them every, probably every other day from the health department. I am now being told that they are opening that up for everybody sixty-five and older. I've yet to see how that is gonna occur, how they're gonna, how they're planning on doing it. I did get an email today, and they are talking about having a portal that the general public can go and log into. And it'll ask you a bunch of very specific questions to determine where you sit in the phases. And it'll tell you when you're eligible to go. And you can, you're supposed to be able to schedule an appointment to go and get the vaccine right there on that portal page. So that is supposed to launch on the seventh. So we're expecting on Thursday, we'll get some more information on where that is. So I think that's about it. I will, I will say that where, we've got some expenditures that have hit us. The, the water department has been, and I, I'm giving you this because it's a financial issue, not because of what, what's going on. But we've, we've already spent our full allocation of materials and supplies for the water department because of all of the water breaks that they've been working. And they're mostly out on the well lines, the big twelve-inch lines that have, you know, they've gotta travel thirteen miles. Well, along that thirteen miles, we're, we've had several breaks along that. And where they're breaking isn't in the center of the pipe. They're breaking at the, at the bell, where one, the, the, the female end of the pipe is cracking along that seam. And so it's, they're not easy to fix, and, and they're, they're struggling, but they're, they're keeping on top of them. I just wanted to let you know, you're gonna start seeing numbers in the financials that they're running out of money. In fact, I signed a, a PO today that put them under, they're in the red. So we're gonna have to come back to you next month to allocate more funds out of the fund balance to, to keep them going. I had to sign it because we have to get some parts back to Altus that we had to borrow in order to fix a twelve-inch mainline burst out on the well line. So that's it. That's what I got from my report.
Okay. Any questions?
Mayor, you're muted.
It's not a member of Congress's financial report for all funds from November twenty twenty.
It's not showing any pictures.
Hey, there you are. You're gonna unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, perfectly.
Okay, so the next thing was, on the agenda was the financial report for all funds from November twenty twenty. Was, did that include, is that additional stuff you need to talk about? Okay, Dave, I can't hear you.
Basically, in your packets, you get the financial statements, and that portion is, is those, those financial statements. We don't ever really talk about them, but I wanted to give you some, some background on them this time.
Okay. Okay, are we ready for item number six, Finn? Okay, so we're gonna go on to item number six, discussion and possible action to accept the FY twenty twenty-one rule or the REIT grant in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. Do I have a motion?
So move.
We have a motion by Gay. Have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Okay, any discussion? Would you like to tell us what that grant's about?
Sure, and this is, this is simple. We've already, we've already done all of the actions necessary for this grant. This is for the Animal Welfare Center, for them to get heat and air. They finally came through and basically deposited the funds. We just have to do the paperwork side, which is to accept those funds on behalf of the city.
Okay, sounds good. Can you call for a vote then, please, Billy?
Gay.
Yeah.
Webb.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Motion carries. Going on to item number seven, discussion and possible action to approve the service agreement between the Institute of Building Technology and Safety and the city of Mangum. The service agreement is IBTS to provide building code and fire code inspection services. And this will include in-person inspections of any and all work being performed within the city that requires a building permit. Rates for services are attached to the agreement. All fees for services shall be paid through the permit fees collected. Okay, do I have a motion?
So move.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
You have a second, though. Webb, can we get some more detailed information, Dave?
Certainly. Basically, what this is, is when, when a construction company, a general contractor comes in and they need to get a permit to build a building, a house, garage, a fence, they're doing whatever they've gotta do. They're purchasing a, a right to do that. And with that right to do it is a requirement by the city to make sure that it's done properly, that it's done within the regulations, that, that they're following all of the building codes, or the electrical codes, or what have you. The problem is, is that we don't have a building engineer. We don't have an electrician. We don't have somebody who is certified to sign off that those things are being done correctly. What IBTS is, and they are kind of a subset of the Oklahoma Municipal League. And what they've done is, is they've created a system by which small towns that can't afford to hire a full-time inspector to get a reasonable rate for somebody to come out and perform those inspections. The reason why I pushed for this so, so hard on this particular meeting is, is because if, when you, when we get into the MUA side of the House tonight, we're gonna start talking about distributed generation, people putting solar panels on their roofs. That is something that we have to be incredibly careful in how that's implemented. The, the, on the, on the contractor side, they have a very specific set of rules that they have to follow. And in order to safeguard our line workers, the electricians are, are electric guys, there are, there are certain things that have to be put in place on the construction side of putting solar on a roof, that if the grid goes down and these guys are still generating power off of the sun, they're not gonna electrocute our guys who are working on the power lines to fix, if that makes sense. There, there's, there's looping that has to be built into the systems that disconnect them from the grid automatically. We don't know how to do that. We don't know how to inspect for that. We don't know what we're looking for. So we want to get a, a contract with a company that can come out here and do those inspections for us. That, and that's any kind of inspection. They can come out and do our, you know, we, we've got a problem now with Center Point Energy that they require the city to do pressure tests on gas lines. So if a gas line is turned off for more than a week, they require a certification from the city to say that a pressure test was done. We don't do that. We don't have a plumber on staff. We don't, that's not our thing. So what we're having to do is literally call on a, a plumber to come out, do that pressure test, tell us that it was good, and then call Center Point and say, hey, the pressure test was done and it's good. That costs them money to, to do that, where if, if they're having a permit, it should be covered in the cost of that permit to do those inspections. So that's what this is all about. With this, we're gonna have to do some, some searching through all of our schedule of fees to make sure that our schedule of fees covers all the costs involved here. And just to marry them up, making, make sure that we are charging the same amount for our, our permit fee as what IBTS is gonna charge us to go out and do that, that task. So I hope I explained that well enough.
Are there any questions, anybody? If not, let's go ahead and take a vote for item number seven. Do I have, I'll have a motion in a second. Could we call for a vote?
Gay.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. That's on number seven. Number eight on the agenda is a discussion and possible action to accept the bids for the roofs of the City Hall Annex Fire Department Shop, one thirty-one North Oklahoma, and the City Fire Department two oh one North Oklahoma. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to motion.
A motion by Reese. Have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded. Any other discussion on that? Can you tell us what the bids are?
Okay, okay. So there are two really kind of, there are two separate ways that I've asked them to, to bid on this. One is to repair, and one is to replace. We got two sets of bids, one from McCafee Fox. McCafee Fox is the company that did the, the theater, the Mason Building. They've also done some other work for us. They, they did the, the New Hope Building as well. The other bid comes in from White Tiger, and White Tiger is a subset, and they're subcontracted by PrideX, which is Chris Poindexter, if anybody knows who he is. White Tiger came in and they took a look. First, just let me say that MFR really didn't have a, a fix. They had to come in and replace everything. There was, White Tiger came out and said, hey, we really don't need to replace the whole thing. We can fix a couple of things here and there, and we can make it, make it last much longer. The roof on the annex is almost brand-new. Evidently, that roof was done in twenty fifteen. The, there's, there is some, some framing work that needs to be done. The, that is a, that's a separate quote in here, because it's not part of the roofing that they're saying they need to fix. It's a part of a framing issue, and so that's why you're seeing several different types of, of, of jobs, so to speak, here. The City Hall, the, the leak that's over the, at the, the fire department, they actually fixed that for us for free. They went up there and they took a sealant just to, just to save the, the firefighters from having to wake up in the middle of the night to drips of water on their heads. They, they did that out of the kindness of their heart. They went up there, they sealed it off, and, and it's good. Eventually, it's gonna have to be replaced, but the seal that they did was probably gonna last a couple of years. So we're, we're okay. We can, we can save up for that and, and put that on the, the replacement list and budget that later. There is a major problem at the front of the building, and that does need to be fixed. For that, the front entrance is the five thousand five hundred dollars from White Tiger. If you see, that is just to replace that, that area that's ponding and is leaking through the entrance of City Hall. It is that, I hope that kind of explained it. I know that what you got in your packets was a little confusing as to what was getting fixed where. The, the, the recommendation that I have is that we go with the White Tiger roofing. We have them fix the, the front of the, the City Hall for that five thousand five hundred, and that will stop the leaks that are coming in to the front of the building, doing more damage than what we, it's, it's a mess. We'll just say that. The nineteen thousand four, seven forty-nine, I think that's to, that is the one to replace the, the City Hall roof. There is gonna be some additional stuff that's gonna come down. The bell tower on City Hall for the Fire Department is shot. It's, it's in really, really bad shape. They've said that's gonna have to be fixed within the next year. But again, it's not a roofing issue, so we didn't have them bid that in with this. So I will entertain questions. I'm sure you have them.
So the, the total cost that we're looking at is that nineteen thousand plus the fifty-five hundred?
That's, yes. Okay, so McCafee Fox, they came in at eighteen thousand two hundred. That is for the, yeah, fifty-eight square, fifty-eight hundred square feet. The White Tiger came in at nineteen. I don't, from what I was told by White Tiger, they have fixed that, so we don't need to spend that nineteen thousand for right now. We just need to spend the five thousand.
So you're asking for approval for the fifty-five hundred?
Yes.
Dave, what about the one at the shop in the City Hall Annex?
They've, they have, the annex, the roof isn't bad. The leak that's coming in over there is where a little bit of ponding has occurred, and they've already, they've, they've decided they were just gonna fix that as well. What needs to happen on the annex is a structural issue. And that's gonna need to happen soon. So I'm gonna get back with them to get the structural details. I kind of put them on, on a time crunch with the holidays and everything to, to get this done and into me on time. And then they had the contract with a, a guy that lost his house down in Altus and burning, or that burned down. And so he, he got sidetracked, so. Anyway, that's, that's why we've, we've, we just wanna do the fifty-five hundred for this time. Then we'll come back with, with the fix to the annex.
Okay, if there's not any more discussion or questions, can we have an amended motion for the approving, or another motion for?
Can I have, I have one more question?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
The, Dave, the, the fifty-five hundred, what's the expected length that it's gonna prolong the need to replace it?
It's a replacement of that. So the, the fifty-five hundred only covers that entrance roof. So when you look at the front of City Hall, the, the front entrance that pushes out from the front of City Hall, if this is the front wall, there's a, there's the entrance. There is a roof that only goes about three-quarters of the way up the, the side of the, the building, the front of the building. That fifty-five hundred covers the, a new roof along that, so it should last twenty-five years.
I'm looking, and on this bid, it says a minimum charge of the fifty-five hundred. Would it be cheaper to do the entire amount in the long run?
That fifty-five hundred is not included in the, in the full. When, when you look at the City Hall, the, the, replacing the City Hall roof, this fifty-five hundred is not included in that. Okay. It's a separate roof. There are two different roofs. City Hall has two roofs, one that's, that you see, that's the, the, the top roof of it. And then on the front side of the building, there's a roof at three-quarters of the height of the building that covers the entrance, and that's what the fifty-five hundred covers.
Any other questions? Okay, do I have an amended motion?
Do you need an amended motion?
Yeah, because we need to specify the fifty-five hundred with White Tiger. If that's what you wanna do, that was his recommendation.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Gay makes the motion to approve the White Tiger bid for fifty-five hundred. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second for the amended motion. Any discussion? Would you call for a vote? Billy, are you there?
We lost Billy.
I think we lost her.
Yeah, she'll come back in.
Okay. Do we need to call her?
She's coming.
Is she having to just reboot everything, Dave? Oh. You got stuck on there, Ron. I'm glad that thing in the middle can't see.
She lost internet at her house.
Okay, can she do it by phone?
Yeah, that's where we're going next. Hey Cory, can I keep her on the cell phone here and do the roll call myself?
Yes, you can. Since she's not a commissioner, we don't have to physically see her, so, yeah.
Okay. Do you hear that?
Yes, we heard that.
Okay.
Yeah, we can hear.
All right, I'm talking to Billy now. The motion is to accept the $5,500 bid from White Tiger.
Who made the motion?
Ron Gay, seconded by... Who's second?
Reese.
Reese.
Okay.
Okay.
And call to vote.
Do you want?
Yeah, call the vote.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. We're going on to item number nine, discussion of possible action to renew the independent contractor agreement with West Texas Turf LLC for the ergonomic maintenance of the Magnum Golf Course. Okay. Can we discuss all this stuff before we make a motion and everything?
I think this is something we need to discuss.
I'd like to discuss it, even if, you know, I still need to find out the real true rules. I think, Ron, you were going to give me some tips on...
I don't believe we have to make a motion to discuss it.
Okay.
I believe you do.
Let's see, Ron says we did.
And the point is, you can still vote it down when they call for the vote.
Okay, all right, we'll just go ahead and do it that way. Do I have a motion for the renewal, the possible action to renew the independent contractor for Texas turf? Do I have a motion?
I make the motion, we approve it.
We have a motion. Do I have a second? Gay said he seconded. Okay, let's have a discussion now.
Okay.
Dave, this is only through June 30, correct?
This renews it for the year, so their contract is actually up February 1st.
But can it go beyond June 30?
Yeah. Yeah, even though it crosses over a fiscal year, it's an annual deal. A lot of contracts that we do have evergreen clauses where they just renew automatically. The reason we didn't evergreen clause this one was because we are changing the agreement by basically saying they're not going to expect anything from us, and they're going to take care of all of the grounds for what we paid for the first year. So no longer do we have to give them the labor, inmate labor. We don't have to do any of the, you know, maintenance on the lawn mowers, you know, which, as greens, lawn mowers are incredibly expensive. We don't have to provide all of that stuff. All we have to do now is pay them the fee, and they're taking care of all of the greens' keepings. And we now get regular updates. We said I would have thought of it, or I'd taken some of the photos and put them on my screen here so I could share it with you. We have greens. Of the nine, well, it's actually 10, 10 greens that we have out there, seven of them are almost playable. There's two that still, you know, they're not up to par yet, but it's going to take time, and we all knew it was going to take time for that. But they're doing their job, they're doing what they've been contracted to do. They know that they didn't meet what they were hoping for in being ready to open in the fall, but they knew that they needed to take the time to do the greens right. They're anticipating now with where we are today with the greens that in April, we should be able to open.
Travis, have you been out there?
I have, and yeah, number 1, 2, 7, 1 is playable right now without a doubt. I mean, it looks as good as it has. It's funny how the South End is struggling and the North End is doing well as far as the greens, which I don't think the geography of them has anything to do with it. But I feel like I'd be willing to make the commitment to June 30, but I don't know about renewing from February to February because if we're not at a point, June 30, that, you know, we're ready to go, then I don't know how we can keep putting money out there.
And I'll just say, this is $95,000, guys. We're just funding money and nothing's, we're not even at a point where we're even making money. And my thought is, is I think at some point, we need to cut the ties. And I don't know, $95,000 is a lot of money. We got a lot of things that we need to do for the city, and right now, I don't know that the golf course should be priority.
Dave, do you think they would consider doing a shorter term contract from February to June 30 so that at that point, if we were satisfied and looked like we were open and had income, then we could renew?
I'm actually looking at the contract to make sure, because there is...
Paragraph 5.2.
There it is. Okay, so we've got our out. If they don't, if they're not performing, we just defund them for FY 2022. That's basically how we could do that.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
5.2, which is what I was looking for, and Cory could read my mind, states that if we defund them, then they have no stance. There's no, they're prohibited from obligating funds, so...
Okay, any other questions? Since the...
We approve this, it can be revisited June 30.
Yes, that's what I was going to...
I would say if we're going to do that, we need to reaffirm it in May. And the reason is, is because if I'm going to have to defund it, we're going to have to defund it before you guys approve the budget. And I need that done at the end of May, beginning of June.
Well, okay, and I think we'll know at that point once we get the spring growing season.
It's not a matter of revisiting, and it's a matter whether you, there's going to be funds obligated to fund it beyond this fiscal year. So that'll be taken care of the budget and process. And as Dave put, based on budget calendar, you more or less have till the month of May. Of course, the final budget doesn't actually get approved till June, but so that gives them that much time to whether, to make y'all make the decision to fund it or not.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Any other changes to the amendment? I mean, excuse me, to the motion? If not, Billy, would you call for a vote?
Gay.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Webb.
No.
Bowman.
Yes.
Okay.
Billy, did you catch all that?
Did you catch it?
Okay. She's got it.
Okay. All right, ordinance and resolutions on number 10, to approve the resolution 2021, amending the FY 21 annual budget, accepting the funds for the REIT grant. They're supposed to go into the general fund revenue line item and expensed in the police department capital improvement line for the use of the animal shelter to install the central heating air. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'd make the motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? I have a second. Any discussion?
It's pretty self-explanatory. Does anybody need me to explain it anymore?
I don't think so. I think you already did.
Okay, I'm trying very hard to make the resolution posting in the agenda so that you have as little questions as possible, make it pretty transparent.
Okay, call for a vote, Billy.
Can you tell me who the second was for?
Who seconded?
Reese.
Reese.
Gay.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Number 11, discussion of possible action to approve the resolution 2021-23 for amending the annual budget for the fire fund, allocating funds from fund balance prior year unextended donations. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Gay made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Bowman seconded. Okay, any discussion? Call for a vote, please, Billy.
Gay.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Number 12, discussion of possible action to approve the 2021-24, amending the 2021 Magnum Utility Authority budget for the wastewater department. And this resolution allocates funds from the E O Y...
End of year, sorry.
End of year, okay, end of year FY 2020 fund balance from the NUA operating budget to pay for the engineering service to assist with the requirement of the ODQ consent order. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Webb. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Bowman seconded. Okay, is there... This is what we've already talked about last time, right?
Yeah, this is, we talked about it, and we knew it was coming. This is, we finally got the quote in for what it was going to cost us from Glenn Sullivan and Associates. So the funding is all in your packet. If anybody have any questions, I can answer.
Any questions, anybody? If not, Billy, go ahead and call for a vote, please.
Gay.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Any new business or anything which was arisen from the time of the posting of the agenda, Dave?
Nothing from the city.
City, anybody else? If not, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
We have a motion from Gay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Reese. Call for a vote, please.
Gay.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. We are adjourned. Now, we're going to go into the... Billy, are you going to need any time? Are you okay? Since we're doing it over the phone, you don't need any extra time, or do you?
No, I don't.
Okay, all right, so we're going to go right into our Magnum Utility Authority meeting for January 5th of 2021. And I'm going to call the meeting to order. Would you please do a roll call?
Scott.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Gay.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. If you look at the consent agenda, we have three items. The minutes for December 1st of 2020, the claims for 2020 December, and the January 2021 estimated payroll. Is there anything you'd like to remove from the agenda to discuss?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as printed.
Okay, Gay has made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Webb seconded. Would you call for a vote, please?
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Gay.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item number four on our agenda, ordinances and resolutions, discussion of the resolution option for changing the electric utility rate structure, adding distributed generation categories and... the resolution option for changing the electric utility rate structure, adding distributed generation categories, and setting rates for services. And then it's got the different options there.
I'd make a motion to accept option two.
Option two?
Who made that motion?
That was Webb.
Thank you.
Did anybody second?
We have a motion to, no, they haven't yet. Which is the residential rights. You guys will look at those.
Actually, if you, please take note that there is no, there's no motion to be made for this one. This is a discussion. The next, the next agenda item is actually, the motion needs to be made. So we can discuss this one out in the open without having to make a motion. I smartly did that one this time. Woo.
But I'm confused because it's, it's an item on the agenda, agenda, and if we're to discuss it, according to Ron, it has to have a motion.
No, only if you're gonna, only if you're gonna make a motion on an actionable item. And we're not making an actionable item on this. This is just a discussion of the options. And then item number five is motion to approve, which option do you want to approve?
Then Dave, I would suggest that everything on the agenda be written this way. I mean, if we're gonna discuss it, I like to, because it doesn't have a return credit. And it reduces the city's loss in a customer charge.
Right. If I, if I can kind of give you my, kind of the whole take on this. First, let me just start with distributed generation is when a homeowner decides they want to, to generate their own power, but tie that into our grid so that they are pushing energy to us when they have excess, and they are giving, or taking energy from us when they're not generating enough. DG is a standard. We are way behind the times right now. We, we probably should have done this years ago. In fact, other towns our size, they took care of this back in twenty sixteen. There is a company who is out there, they are actively and aggressively going after homeowners in our area to, to put solar panels on their roofs. Some of these, I, I won't go into the character of, of these, some of these companies. There are good ones, and there are some bad ones. We have to get something in place before we can allow anybody to put a solar panel on the top of their roof and tie it into our grid. That's the bottom line. And in order to do that, we have to take care of some administrative business, like creating these DG policies, creating our fund structure, and what have you. I will tell you that when you look at the options, I've, I sent, and I put in, did, did you get the, I want to make sure I did, because I was, my intent was to get it to you properly. It kind of explained and showed how much a typical usage cost would be. Did that get in here?
I don't recall seeing that, Dave.
Dave, is your recommendation option two as well?
I'm going with, it actually, right, option two is O M P A's recommendation as well, and yes, that is my recommendation. Option one is, is just, it's, it's really mean-hearted to those who want to go solar. And when I say mean-hearted, it's, we're gonna charge you every bit of what it costs for everybody else. We're gonna take all of your generation, and we're gonna leave you dry. You're getting absolutely nothing out of it. Option two says, well, we're not gonna buy anything back from you, but we're gonna give you a break on the charge, the, the, the per kilowatt hour charge of eleven cents. Because that's gonna go down to nine cents for, for them. That way, we're not buying their generation back, but we are giving them a break on their power bill, that, whatever they're, they're gonna require from us. Option three is a, is the one where we start buying that generation back, and, and we really need to discourage that. And the reason for that is, is because when we start paying back those, those, you know, we, we start paying for their generation. That means the neighbors around them are gonna have to pay more for their power. Because we still have a grid to, to run. We've still got a utility system that we've got to maintain. We, we still have electricians and linemen that we have to hire and pay. And when we start seeing distributed generation, and this is, it's really hard for me to say this, because I've always been an active advocate for solar. I'm, I'm kind of a, a green-minded person. And it wasn't until I, I kind of sat down with the folks, and they, they were able to explain it to me in this way. Those people who put solar on their roofs are being subsidized for those who can't afford it. It's, it's really a, it's unfair to those who can't afford to put solar on their roof. And, and when, when we pay them back for that. Option two is the most fair to the owner of the solar and to the neighbors. Because we're not gonna have to change our rates in order to keep on going with this, if that makes sense.
Okay, any other questions, discussion?
Mayor, you're, you're muted.
My computer keeps rebooting, and when it does, it comes back on mute. So we have a.
No motion.
No motion yet.
No motion on this. This is just the discussion. So if we want to move to item four, or five, sorry.
We want to go to item number five, motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-one twenty-five, option number whatever, as discussed in the item. So do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve option two.
We have a motion by Webb to approve option number two. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, Bowman seconds. Do you call for a vote, please?
Scott.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Gay.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Let's go on to item number six, discussion and possible action to approve the engineering service contract between Glenn.
And Maggie, you ready? Contract is for G S A to provide engineering plans, manuals, and consultation services to assist the N U A with the forward E P consensual requirements of cost. Allocated present amendment from fund to N U A.
Mayor, we're not hearing anything.
They're not hearing you.
I think your computer reset again.
Is it? Internet is not stable. Yeah.
And I'm at the end of the line.
Okay, you're back.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Do I need to read that again? Otherwise, do I have a motion for item number six?
Make a motion, we enter into a contract.
Gay makes the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Reese. Would you please call for a vote?
Scott.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Gay.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Number seven, discussion and possible action to approve the amendment to the power supply contract with the O M P A authorizing the Mangum Utility Authority to execute distributed generation agreements with utility customers. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
We have a motion by Gay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Yes.
Did we get one? Who was it? Reese. Okay, I didn't hear him. All right, Reese seconded. Okay, discussion on this.
Okay, so when we do distributed generation agreements, we actually are required to, before we do that, we have to change our agreement with O M P A to allow for that. The, that's what, that's what this is. So the contract that we've got with O M P A is going to be amended, allowing us to do DG agreements. That's basically what this is.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion on that? Okay, could you call for a vote, please, Billy?
Scott.
Yes.
Gay.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Number eight, discussion and possible action to approve the resolution twenty twenty-one twenty-two adopting guidelines for the distributed generation behind the meter policy for the Mangum Utility Authority in the city of Mangum. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Reese. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so would you please discuss this with a couple of their guys?
Mary Jane, we can't hear you again.
We lost you.
Lost you again.
Okay, while you're fixing that up, and you can hear me, so I'm just gonna go ahead and kind of explain what the behind the meter policy is. Part of our agreement now amended with O M P A is that we have a behind the meter policy. And that behind the meter policy is, is basically our distributed generation agreement in writing in policy. The policy states that, you know, we have, that they have to have some, this, the certain kind of disconnects. It sets forth all of the requirements for the installation. It, it sets the cap at which they can generate. We've set a cap and based on the surrounding area and, and the other, the other communities that I've talked to. Typically, they're doing somewhere between two and a half and ten. So I kind of split the difference and said, okay, let's, let's set this at five. And the reason we set a cap limit is because you're only allowed by O M P A to generate one percent of your total peak power requirement from distributed generation. That means if we had seven point five megawatts of of peak generation this year, then that leaves us with seventy-five thousand kilowatt allowable in, in generation. So that one percent is seventy-five thousand kilowatts. So what, we then break that down and say, each person can, each person that wants to put something on their house can only put five kilowatts on there. That way, we can spread the wealth, and it provides more folks with the opportunity to do this rather than some company coming out and, you know, putting a seventy-five thousand watt, or seventy-five thousand kilowatt system on United, so to speak. They would take all of that allocation. This is a first come, first served deal. So if, once we meet that seventy-five thousand kilowatt allocation, we can't accept any more until somebody comes off of it. So that's where the five kilowatt kind of deal comes from. I could go line by line on what the policy states, but it's pretty long. Just, just know and understand that I built this with with my colleagues, Marlo, Comanche, Edmund, Kingfisher, Altis, we've all kind of pitched in, and they've, they helped me build this. I took the best of, of all of theirs and kind of made a, a system that I think is gonna work for us.
Okay, any questions? Any more discussion? This is on item number eight. If not, would you call for a vote?
Gay.
Yeah.
Scott.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, because my screen's locked up again.
Yeah, yeah, we can see your screen is locked up, but I can still hear you.
Okay. Discussion and possible action to approve the city of Mangum distributed generation interconnect agreement along with associated forms. The distributed, distributed generation interconnect agreement allows N U A utility customers the option of placing grid tier solar wind and all of this. This agreement sets the following standards for interconnect lines for failure to comply, the maximum allowed generations for residential and commercial industrial entities, and the permit fees and inspection requirements. The agreement does not affect the utility rate structure. Okay, on item number nine, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Bowman makes the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Reese. Okay, any discussion on this?
This is pretty simple. This is the agreement that the customer has to sign. Typically, the agreement is filled out by the company that, that installs it. They work on behalf of the customer, but the customer also has to understand all of the rules and regulations involved. This also gives us the permit process, the application process. It pretty much covers from cradle to grave, the entire process. The, the interconnect agreement is the policy in contract form, if that makes sense.
Okay, any other discussion? Any questions? If not, Billy, call for a vote, please.
Scott.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Gay.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Any remarks or from the board members or staff or anybody at this time?
Uh, no, I just want to say thank you very much. The, I, I was. I, I was planning on taking a vacation last week, and that didn't happen because of this. So, uh, the, um, it was a lot of work that went into getting these, these done. We've got, uh, two contracts that are pending right now to put solar on the roof. So these, these DG agreements are, are, uh, that, we've got folks out there waiting on them. So I appreciate all of your questions. I appreciate, uh, the, getting this done tonight. So, thank you.
Okay. No new business or anything, Dave?
Nothing from the city.
Okay. Any other comments from anybody?
Just let me say that I never said you have to have a motion for an item on the agenda that is just information that did not require a vote. Only those things that you have to vote on, you have to make a motion to put it on the table to discuss it.
Okay.
And I, I can, I can say, I looked at Robert's rules and it is in there. If you, if you're going to put, if you got a, if you are putting something out for vote, you have to make a motion before you can even discuss it.
But Dave, the way you've written each of the items, it says discuss impossible action.
Correct.
So why can't there be a discussion without action to move on it?
Uh, because you, you, if, if we're going to, and, and this is, I've been kind of fighting with this and, and I really wanted to make sure that that worked and it worked for us. So I, thank you all for being my guinea pigs. Because you made it work. Uh, so from now on, you're going to have a discussion and then you're going to have a motion in two separate, uh, agenda items. It's not going to prolong anything. In fact, it should make things go much faster. Your agendas are going to be a little bit bigger though, because for every one thing that we need to fix, we're going to have two items.
Okay, so you're going to have an item that says discuss, and then you'll have another item underneath it that'll say
Motion to approve.
Or action for that item.
That's correct.
I heard part of it.
Uh, you, she cut off at the end there.
This take I don't know what to do.
It's all good.
I'm all good now.
Yep.
All right, is there any other questions or anything about that that we can discuss? And we'll, we'll try to get that to where it makes real good sense next time then. Okay, otherwise, would you call for a vote for the, um, I mean, did we do a motion and a second for to adjourn?
No.
Okay, I need a motion.
So move.
A motion from Gay, second.
I'll second.
Second from Bowman. Please call for a vote.
Gay?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Reece?
Yes.
Just in time to say goodnight, guys.
And right in time for the end of the meeting, she pops in.
It's been set for you to let me in for a little bit.
Well, it, it, that, that screen is off on the side and it's hard to see it. And I just saw it.
Okay, thank you guys very, very much. Uh, we'll, uh, see you next time. Anything else we need to?
Nope, that's it.
Otherwise, thank you very much.
All right, have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
See you tomorrow, Mary Jane.